All those meeting of Lima City Council's order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, following the invocation by Counselor McLean.
Father, Creator of all, thank you for summer. Thank you for the warmth of the sun and the increased daylight. Thank you for the beauty I see all around me and the opportunity to be outside and enjoy your creation. Thank you for the increased time I have to be with my friends and family and form a casual pace of the summer season. Bless this administration as we go through their business and protect their thoughts to be the ones that flourish. Warm my soul with awareness of your presence and light my path with your word and guidance. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call a roll?
Mr. Nieper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Ms. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. I move that we amend tonight's agenda by adding Ordinance 12013.
Second. The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda by adding Ordinance 12013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. The consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that item B be received and filed and item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place property maintenance tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2013 budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Mayor regarding legislation to replace the video cameras.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation for renovations to police headquarters.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to purchase a digestory circulation pump.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to amend the contract with Clemmons-Nelson.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Communication number six be received and filed and the Law Director authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number six and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to authorize additional spending using Moving Ohio Forward funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit for Walgreens at 2366 Harding Highway.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Communication number eight be received and filed and the clerk authorized to contact the Ohio Division of Liquor Control to communicate to them that this is outside the city limits.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number eight to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control that this location is outside of the city limits. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to reports of officials. We have Mr. Howard Elstro with the 2013 Annual Report.
Mr. President and Counsel, I present to you the City of Lima Public Works Department 2012 Annual Report. The 2012 City of Lima decline in revenue projection forced the $8.4 million Public Works Budget to reduce its general fund dependency by half a million dollars. Strategic decisions prior to and through 2012 were made and implemented to minimize service reductions. The city reduced operating costs for its buildings, parks, and street lighting facilities and systems through energy-efficient program improvements funded with the use of RZ bond funding, which is a stimulus program, and energy-related rebate programs. Aggressive commodity shopping for fuel, salt, et cetera capped the department's expenditures, dependency on contracted service, and seasoned employees whereas required, as well as strategically managing full-time vacancies and temporary furloughs of employees to non-general fund positions. Expenditure on large capital projects also declined. In 2010, we spent $15 million on capital projects, 2011, $11 million, and 2012, $6 million. As federal stimulus programs ended and resources for large projects again became dependent upon local fuel tax, license tax, state and federal allocations. Despite these challenges, the department did complete 17 major capital projects, provided essential city services including road maintenance, traffic control, recreation programs, park maintenance, countywide commercial plan review and inspection, and increased services in the area of stormwater management. The report that I've provided with you details those services and accomplishments made by the City of Lima Public Works Department during 2012, and both me and my staff appreciate the opportunity to serve you and the constituents of the City of Lima. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Next is Gary Shealy.
Mr. President, the members of council. My topic is actually the Ottawa River TMDL, not PMDL. TMDL stands for Total Maximum Daily Load Limits. Just to let you know, this is the actual report that was filed by the Ohio EPA. It's over 100 pages and stature. It's very detailed, although has some serious flaws that we contend. This is a copy of the filings that we basically filed last Friday in accordance with the public hearing or the public presentation process input that the EPA has. You could desire if I let me go through all these details or I can go through a one-page document that I think the President of Council has requested.
We would prefer the latter.
Again, the document you go through is the Ottawa River PM TMDL. It was, the comment period was due last Friday through our attorneys. Ice Miller, Mr. Samuel's filed the documents with the Ohio EPA. We basically are objecting to the report based upon the TMDL being seriously flawed and have requested the Ohio EPA to reconsider the TMDL. The highlights that I'll briefly go through, we have looked at what would we perceive would be the overall cost to meet an ultra-low phosphorus limit at the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant to send the MGD, which would have a cost of $58 million for us to comply. In addition to that, would add over a million dollars, almost $1.2 million of annual operating costs to our budget. So it's a very, very significant proposal the agency has been providing. This is in addition to the $150 million that we've been discussing regarding the integrated plan and the long-term control plan process the city's going to be entering into. The ultra-low is a phosphate limit of 0.08. It would be equivalent to some of the highest-quality waters in the state of Ohio in the stream area. The Ottawa River will never beat that type of criteria. We basically believe that the calculation they did is called the load duration curve or the LDC used by Ohio EPA is not the appropriate instrument. It's based upon Association's report that US EPA did a number of years ago, and it has been flawed. It's a scientifically flawed document that most scientists that we have engaged with believe it is not the appropriate instrument to use. The Ohio EPA is presently going through rulemaking on what they call the TIC, which is the Trapping Index Criterion. We believe that is a better criteria to basically use to do our TMDL. Ohio EPA received a grant from US EPA that says by the middle of July of this year, they have to have the TMDL finalized and in the hands of the Region Five Administrator. If they do not have that, then the EPA is in jeopardy of losing some grant funding. This is what's driving their criteria of using a, versus a TIC, using this LDC type of report that they themselves basically believe is flawed, that they feel that that's what they had to move to to basically get qualified for these grant fundings. The overall relationship between aquatic light pollution scoring and the model is under extreme scrutiny. We have a number of scientists and engineers that have reviewed it, and our comments are privy to all those discussions with the agencies. So I guess in summary, we believe that the TIC is a better model. It's what should be used in our TMDL. There are some issues with the TIC model, which we have commented on also as part of another filing with the agency on an early outreach to the agency. And we believe that the TIC model is a better fit than what the US EPA is trying to basically move through, which is standard numerical limits for phosphates and nitrates. One-size-fits-all would probably be more disruptive. Ohio's program is basically a weight-of-evidence-type criteria, the TIC, that really allows you to look at your different water bodies and draw better conclusions as to what will be required and what the ultimate end result will be. Both these documents are on file in our offices. If you would like to have copies of them, we can email them to you, or if you want to come and peruse them in the office if you have the time and so forth. Other questions?
No questions, just one comment. It's amazing you stand here without duct tape around your head.
Thank you.
And you thank you for that? Having to deal with this, it's... I know. The definition of insanity. Moving on to ordinances, 11013.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in an aggregate principal amount of $157,000 to pay in anticipation of the collection of special assessments heretofore levy the cost of constructing sidewalks at various locations in the city, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that Lima City Council receive the, accept the fiscal officer's certificate.
Second.
Motion in the second is that Lima City Council accept the fiscal officer's certificate. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. President, I move that Ordinance 110...
Mr. Geiger's grabbing the microphone.
Mr. President, Mr. Tevin, I noticed that our Bond Council wrote the ordinance under our old ordinance format of suspending the rules and passing it as an emergency. I would ask them to be consistent that you do it that way.
Oh, do it.
Suspend the...
Okay.
Yeah. Just be consistent with the way he wrote the ordinance.
Sorry.
Okay. We can't just authorize a clean copy?
I'd rather avoid the issue for him.
Okay.
Because that comes from that.
Yeah, that comes from Columbus.
Okay.
I'll see if I can remember that, because we haven't done it for so long. Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 11013 be handled under suspension of rules and passed on its first reading as an emergency.
Second.
The motion in the second is that Lima City Council pass Ordinance 11013 under the suspension of the rules and pass it on its first reading as an emergency. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 11013 has been passed by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11113.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 11113 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 11113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 11113 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11213.
Amending the 2013 Annual Budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 112-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 11213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 11213 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11313.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the FOP Ohio Labor Council Inc., Park Rangers.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Ordinance 11313 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 11313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 11313 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11413.
Authorizing payments to the West Central Ohio Crime Task Force from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund Account.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 11413 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 11413 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 11413 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11513.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Schultz Fluid Handling Equipment Company.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 11513 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 11513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 11513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11613.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with URS Corporation for services to renovate the second floor of the Police Courts Building.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 11613 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 11613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 11613 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11713.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with URS Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 11713 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 11713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I don't know if anybody's drove by, down by the underpass, but that building gone sure changes the look of that area, so I'm glad it's down and it's looking better and we're moving forward with it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 11713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11813.
Amending Ordinance 26712.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 11813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 11813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 11813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11913.
Amending Ordinance 17712.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
Move that Ordinance Number 11913 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 11913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 113... Sorry. Ordinance 11913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 12013.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to replace video cameras, video switching equipment, and recording equipment for GTV2 located in the council chambers.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 12013 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 12013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Nieper.
Yes. Ordinance 12013 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Civil and Use Business, Mr. McLean.
Not this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe.
Starting June the 11th at 7:00 p.m., Eastside Neighborhood Association has changed our location for holding our meetings. They will be held in Sixth Town Square, which is the southeast corner of downtown Lima, starting at 7:00 p.m. at Sixth Town Square. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items here. Hope Neighborhood will be meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at Unity. It will be the last meeting before the summer break, so hope those of you that hear this and have been notified will be there. Public hearing at 5:00 on the CDBG, and it's the Council of the Whole, and the CDBG and Home Programs, June 17th on Monday. Remind all of Council, because it's Council of the Whole meeting at 5:00. And Economic Community Development Committee, I'd like to call a meeting for June 10th at 5:30, and the subject will be the continuation of the discussion of junk autos. And this is basically to hear back from the Administration, LPD, and the Law Department on what we had requested of an ideal flow chart of, so we're not duplicating services, and so that'll be presented. And then I hope, and it'll be announced later, and we will be sending letters out through the Council Clerk to around a dozen home property owners, large property owners in the city, to attend a meeting tentatively around, on the 24th. But for right now, you're welcome to attend on June 10th, but there'll be more of a discussion